For educators in Ankeny School District, against negativity in the community, entrepreneurial professionalism of our educators. We need you to make sure the resources, financial, personnel, and training to meet the ever-growing needs of our students are available to us. We need you to provide the most competitive benefits and compensation package in the metro area. We need you to assure Ankeny educators to have the time, benefits, compensation, and support as professionals so that Ankeny Schools will continue to be the place to work.
Okay, Lucy Jasso? Hasso? I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's Lucy Hasso.
Hasso, thank you.
Yep. So, my name is Lucy Hasso. I was not going to speak, but on the drive here, I decided to. I am a staff member of Ankeny Schools, but quite honestly, I'm heartbroken. I'm heartbroken for my community. I'm heartbroken for my brothers and sisters. I'm heartbroken that you would allow somebody of a closed mind to even try to take away the GSA. Those are so many students who need that. I hear so many students that don't have allies that need that. And if you guys take that away, you're hurting those students. You're hurting those children. You're hurting so many opportunities for these kids to be protected and feel like they can be somebody. Myself, I was nervous after several people made a public thing about Complete Moon's performance. I bought this shirt. I should be proud, but I was scared. I was scared because you didn't have my back. I was scared because of all the derogatory comments on Facebook. Okay, so maybe there were some things that I don't know that wasn't follow-through. I'm not aware of that. I can't speak of that. But what I can say is that this is a person. We're all people. And we all are a strong community. And it's gonna take a lot more than two people up here to break us and put us down. What I can tell you guys, though, it means a lot to us as staff, as parents. My child is a bisexual African young beautiful woman. It means a lot that you honor the GSA and you keep it for her, for my other children, for other kids who need that ally. This was not pornography. Because if you look up pornography, it's gonna be different from what you saw. And not only that, guys, what about the Spice Boys? That's gonna be mentioned several times tonight. If you're going to allow one performance, and that was okay because those were straight boys in cheerleading outfits, but then you're going to criticize a different situation? That's completely wrong. That's completely wrong. And I stand by my brothers and my sisters. GSA should always stay here.
Eos Gustafson?
Hello, I'm Eos Gustafson, and I'm an openly queer student at AHS and an active member of the GSA. And I'm here to talk about the AHS Drag Show. Firstly, I'd like to say, although I did not attend the drag show, drag is not inherently sexual or dirty. It is simply an art form and a way for queer people to express themselves. I know that many people may not understand drag. And I'd like to say that just because you may not understand something is not inherently bad or wrong. And it does not deserve to be criticized and hated. For example, some people may be lactose intolerant, but the French Club will host cheese tasting for members. If the same rules were applied there, should these students and teachers be punished for serving cheese? Secondly, I would like you all to know that everyone who attended the drag show was there by choice, and no one was forced to go. It was not mandatory, as some may believe. When my parents were in school, which was not that long ago, a gathering of queer kids would have been seen as absurd and disgusting. Those kids would have been laughed at and made a joke and beaten. And now you want to demonize queer gatherings again? Despite all the progress we have made, LGBTQ+ youth are at greater risks of self-harm and suicide. This is heartbreaking because many of my friends are queer, and I don't want people I love at risk of these things. We know that creating a community where people are accepting of queer kids is much safer for everyone. And I hope you all check your own prejudices and biases about queer people and that you do what's right.
Abby Tilges?
Say that again.
Abby Tilges? I'm really sorry for these names.
Hello, I'm Abby Tilges, and I just graduated from Ankeny High School. This is my first-ever school board meeting, so please grant me a little grace. I was drawn to speak tonight to set the record straight. I was at the Gay Straight Alliance's end-of-year celebration. It was not a sexual event. It was a school club event. And it was organized as part of the GSA's celebration to empower its queer students. We had a little social where students could chat and have snacks. And then we moved over to the auditorium, where three youth drag queens who perform at under-21 shows were going to perform for us. The first queen to perform did some acrobatics and wore a leotard with thick opaque skin-colored leggings underneath, as we have many times witnessed our cheerleaders and dance team do. The king that performed did nothing more than lip-sync to artists like 21 Pilots. And the final performer was my own classmate who danced and lip-synched to Broadway shows. Nothing more than we have seen him do before as he has been involved in our school's drama department since middle school. These performers were not groomers, as I've seen some parents call them online. Each of the performers was under 21 years old, members of the Iowa Youth Pride Pageant. Once they performed, they spoke about their journey. A little bit about their drag journey, but mostly about their journey in finding their gender identity, something most students at the event could relate to. That's right. Something most students at the event could relate to. This event was only put on for students of the GSA who were informed of its happening weeks in advance. This show was not forced upon any student that did not want to be there. Students showed up to be with their peers and to see representation of themselves. I'd like to ask upset parents to reflect upon this fact. No one at the event was forced to be there. It is understandable for parents to be upset that the event was reportedly not approved by the administration, but to attack a safe space for queer students at the notoriously inequitable and uninclusive Ankeny High School, as evidenced by the recent direct audit in which students and teachers alike report that students using slurs about LGBTQ status is a pressing concern, according to the Des Moines Register, is doing nothing but making Ankeny less safe for its students, and frankly, its faculty as well. I ask that the school board and parents use this perspective to help uplift its students and faculty rather than vilify and oppress them. Thank you.
Monica Tilges?
Hello, my name is Monica Tilges, and I have this crazy little belief that all people should be treated equally. I'm a mom, a nurse, and an ally. I am here to support my recent graduate daughter and her friends who were in attendance at the GSA club. I'd like to first start by defining key buzzwords that you've read online and possibly will hear tonight that will be thrown around. These words will divide the student body and make them less inclusive to others will divide the student body and make them less inclusive to others that may not think, feel, or look like they do. The one term you may hear is indoctrination. The definition is a teaching of someone to accept a set of beliefs without questioning them. Another term you may hear tonight is grooming, defined by the Oxford Dictionary as actions by a pedophile or preparing a child for a meeting with the intent of committing sexual offense, leading us to the term pedophile, defined as a person who is sexually attracted to children. As clearly defined, these are not actions that have occurred at the GSA. Some will try to manipulate the definitions to indicate wrongdoing to further their personal agendas, to ban books, sue schools, and teachers, as evidenced by Iowa Senate File 2198. Let's shift now to talk about representation. It is defined as portrayal of someone or something in a particular way as of being of a certain nature. Representation is important to youth, teens, minorities, and everyone consuming oxygen. According to Psychology Today, positive media representation can be helpful in increasing self-esteem for people of marginalized groups, especially youth. Intro-personal contact and exposure through media representation can assist in reducing stereotypes of the underrepresented groups. According to the CDC Statistics on Suicide, it's the second-leading cause of death in youth. LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to seriously consider suicide, to plan the end of their own life, or to attempt suicide versus their non-LGBTQ peers. The Trevor Project 2021 data reports 19% of LGBTQ ages 13 to 18 reported attempting suicide. 8.3% of 19- to 24-year-olds reported attempting suicide. The statistics double for middle and high school students comparatively to college students. That is 17,990 deaths in 2021. If that number doesn't seem too large to you, let's put it in perspective. Allow me to break down the math. That is 1.4 attempts each minute every day for 365 days in 2021. That is why representation matters. It is critical to have someone who tells you, "It gets better. I've been there, and I am much better placed now," to provide real-life face-to-face testimony by someone who has walked their shoes, especially for those who are struggling with self-esteem issues. I'm gonna go a little off-script just to make a note that the photos that were shared tonight were one snapshot in time. You have seen those same photos, similar outfits, similar poses by the cheer and dance team.
Monica, the three minutes is up. I'm sorry.
My name is Lori Lovsted. I'm the parent of four Ankeny School students, one former and three current. Dr. Pruitt and board members, I'm speaking tonight to address your second opportunity as a district to fill a vacancy on the school board in the past six months. There is a law precedent, not only in Ankeny, concerning how school boards fill unexpected vacancies. After Director Bohannon resigned because less than half of her term was left, you appointed former Director Johnson to fill her vacancy. But when there is more than half a term left after an unexpected vacancy, it is considered proper to allow a special election to determine who fills the seat. With three and a half years left on Director Murphy's term, that would seem to be the obvious and proper choice. If you, as a board, decide not to follow that course of action, I can only implore you, as a former board member, to be as transparent as possible in your process. You would be creating an elected school board with almost a third of its members not elected by the public they serve. If you feel you must appoint a new board member, please follow the good examples set by recent metro school boards. Allow time for members of the public to submit their names for consideration to be appointed by the board. Share those names publicly so there is transparency in the process. And vote publicly on who the appointee will be. Many of you ran on platforms of openness and transparency, and that is what is necessary to create public trust in you right now. If you want transparency in this process for the second time, it means that your first concern is politics and backroom agendas, not transparency and due process for your electors. Please do the right thing for our community and allow this vacancy to stand and call for a special election to fill this position. And with my remaining time, I wish to stand here in support and alliance with our LGBTQ+ students and staff and their need for due process and protection from discrimination. I was appalled at the public attacks they have endured by so-called adults with no actual knowledge or connection to any alleged events, the blatant spread of misinformation, and frankly, the deliberate lies being told about what may or may not have happened. It has been heartening to see support from the community during what ironically is Pride Month. But the greatest disappointment has been the lack of mental and emotional support given to these students by those who are supposed to be their protectors, the district itself. We all don't have to agree on every aspect of this situation, but we should all agree that death threats against children are unforgivable, and they should be called out in the strongest language. An investigation into whether or not policies and rules were followed and applied equitably to the GSA is an administrative process that should be deliberate and equitable to all parties. But there should be no hesitation in a district that just unanimously approved a DEI framework to stand up for its marginalized students and staff who are undergoing hateful and discriminatory attacks. No manner of alleged policy infraction should make a student or staff member afraid to come to school or do their job. Our new strategic plan addresses these issues. Our DEI framework you just voted on addresses these issues. Please, your actions where your words are, and do better. Thank you.
So I was gonna use my full three minutes, and anybody who knows me knows that I can do that pretty well. I'm Lori Bullock. I have two children in the district. I'm gonna use about 30 seconds, and then my 12-year-old feels compelled to speak, so I'm gonna cede my time to her. I just want everyone to know that there are a lot of accusations. I'm here as a parent, in that capacity only. My child was in attendance at the GSA drag show. The only thing that I heard in response was how incredible and amazing it was how children got to see people accepting themselves, being themselves, and got to experience some camaraderie with individuals who are just like them, who are queer, who are gay, who have gender, you know, they're trans. And it was an incredible experience for all of those children. And I urge you to take that in the manner that it was intended. I'm going to cede my time. This is Lily.
Hi, I'm Lily, and I just finished sixth grade. And I personally have been to an all-age drag show, and the worst... Sorry. And what I saw was people being happy to be themselves and being welcome. And in that moment, when I was there, I felt included and welcome because I personally am bi. At school, I have not been welcomed. So when I heard that the high school had a drag show, I was not there. But I know kids who were, and they said that they loved it, and it was exciting. And I know that those kids wanted to be there. And I'm guessing, no. I know that all those kids had fun. And I know that drag shows are just a way to express how you feel and how you are. And it's not a way... It's not bad. And just because someone dressed up, like the cheerleaders dress up and just as, like, they dress up in costumes too, just like that. And there's really not that big of a difference. And so I see drag shows as a great way to be with people who are like you and express and welcome people in the community. Thank you.
Hello? Can I... Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Amazing. Hello, my name is Gemma Bullock. I'm gonna keep this short because I'm a little nervous. I am 17, and I am now a senior at Ankeny High School. I am bisexual, and I am a part of the GSA. On Monday, May 23rd, I attended the Ankeny GSA end-of-year party. It was a social gathering where we ate cookies and ice cream, talked to our friends about what we were going to do for the summer, and recognized some of the seniors in GSA. After everyone settled down and finished eating their food, we headed to the auditorium, where three performers shared with us their skills as drag performers. Each of them talked to us about what drag meant to them and how they expressed gender using drag. All of the students in the audience wanted to be there. No student was forced to sit in those chairs and watch the drag performance. It was an activity that they wanted to learn about. And all of the students said it was a very positive experience. I have been to four drag performances this year, all of them family-friendly, most with very young children in attendance. What I saw on that Tuesday definitely matched those performances. All of the drag performers were singing and dancing along to songs without profanity and were wearing clothing and tights that covered up all of their skin. None of their movements could have been misconstrued to be something sexual by the students who attended. At no point while I was sitting in the audience did I think that this was inappropriate. None of the performers are over the age of 21, but I've seen these people online being called horrible things. One of our own Ankeny students performed that day, and I have seen my friend get called a groomer and a pedophile. Before I end my three minutes here because I'm very nervous and short, I would like to read something that I see every time a staff member from the district emails me. "Ankeny Community School District does not discriminate based on race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, gender, identity, age, disability, marital status, or sexual orientation." With the response that I have seen from the school district, I believe that their actions go directly against this statement. Thank you for your time.
Hello, good evening. My name is Marcus Blake, also known as Majesty Diamond. I'm here to be a shield and protect the next generation of youth that they discover themselves in this journey we call life. I remember being in school and thinking all my life that I was different. Was I wrong? No. But what I didn't know is that it was okay. It was okay for me to be different because we all are. I've been bullied. I've been screamed at. I've been called names for being who I am at a young age. And I lied to myself and the world around me, trying to fit in to what I thought was normal. But it shouldn't be like this. The youth that stand before you today are trying to make sure no child should have to be put through this again. Drag has not only changed my life, but it has saved my life. It's brought me to be content with myself as a gay black man. It's not only brought me happiness and an outlet for creativity, but it has brought me family, people like me who struggled the way I did. And now I stand before you as a proud member of my community and strive to be the person I never had. These kids should not feel like they have to hide themselves from who they are. And when they start to discover it, they should be able to have someone in their corner to listen to them. Over the last year, me and my drag partner have become like parents to some of these youth because their families aren't so accepting of who they're becoming. Drag is an art, and many of us have worked hard at perfecting it. For some of us, it's a fun hobby. For others, it's a lifeline. And even for a few of us, it's our full-time jobs. Many have tried to relate drag to inappropriate things, but it's different for everyone, and that is okay. Now, drag is very valid. So we shouldn't be taking away something that is helping bring our youth to discover who they are. If you don't believe me, come to a show and wash yourself. You won't be able to wipe happiness in someone's eyes as they are doing something that they love. It's the opportunities for me and many others, such as traveling the country and meeting new people. Let's not rip another thing from a generation that is already going through so much. Thank you.
Carson Dos. Hello. My name is Carson Dos. I just recently graduated from Ankeny High School this past Saturday, and I am a drag queen and am currently reigning with Central Iowa Youth Pride. Today, as I stand before you, I'd like to tell you a little story about my time at AHS. Growing up in the Ankeny School District was not very easy for me. Since I started school in Ankeny, I always felt different and outcasted by my peers and staff members. I spent most of my years trying to hide who I was, made myself just like everyone else. My goal was to fit in. This world did nothing but tear me apart on the inside. I spent almost an hour every morning trying to pick something out to wear because I didn't want to be seen as gay or feminine. This thought process took a toll on me for several years. That is, until I decided to stop pretending. After coming out, it took me two long years to allow myself to break through the mindset that I had set for myself. Sorry. During the summer of 2020, I began to play with makeup for the first time. I knew I wasn't very good. However, it made me feel like myself. It felt like with makeup on, I could be whoever I wanted to be, and no one could stop me. Soon, I took all those feelings and took myself on a journey of self-discovery. I was able to use drag and makeup and clothing as a betrothal for who I wanted to be in real life. Being able to feel so confident in what I was wearing made me feel just like myself for the first time in 16 long years. I began to let myself break from everyone else's mold, and I began to blossom into the human being that is not only comfortable expressing who he loves, but presenting himself the way he wanted to be viewed. I never lost that feeling of being different in the Ankeny School District. But the feeling of being different began to change from something I needed to hide into something that I could fully embrace. It became what made me special. I struggled with this journey of acceptance on my own. I never felt like I could go to anyone else because I feared how they would react. That is why I contributed to putting on a drag show at Ankeny High School, my school. This show meant so much to me because I felt like I could share my journey of becoming myself and give those students in the GSA an outlet, a trusted person to share their struggles. This show was a way for me to demonstrate to these students that there are people in this community just like them that have struggled with these same struggles they are facing. I wanted to show them that they are loved, supported, appreciated, and wanted. I needed to give them the support system I wish I had at their age. To this day, I wish I hadn't hidden myself from the world, and I wish from this show that all students would see people for who they truly are and inspire them to embrace what makes them different. Ankeny made me feel like I didn't belong. All I wanted to show those students was that they belong and that embracing themselves is the best way to survive the torment that Ankeny will put them through. Thank you.
Skiler Barney? I'm sorry, it looks like S-K-I-L-L. Skylar, I'm so sorry.
Hi, my name's Skylar, or Complete Moon, the drag queen that was accordingly the stripper on your guys' stage. So I partook in the Ankeny High School GSA end-of-year celebration. Many of you are probably questioning why I did this event. So let me just tell you, I graduated from Sheridan. Not a lot of people know where that is, but that is Southern Iowa, and it's very rural. I did not have that support growing up. So what my goal was, was to give them a voice, give them someone to look at and go, "That's me. I can do that too." Because growing up in that small town, I did not get that. For years, I faced ridicule, much from the school board, students, other families, parents. And so therefore, our goal was to help them. Now, you've all seen the photos a million and one times, including just now. I'm sorry, this is not my good ankles, but the thing is, is they were ankles. They bodysuit. Now, I've seen on all of the Ankeny School Board, or Ankeny Schools pages, all kinds of different outfits. The Spice Boys, et cetera, the cheerleaders. But the one that really gets me is on the wrestling homepage, there is a high school boy in a singlet, extremely exposed, full print of everything, and that's okay. But I came out in a bodysuit, six pair of skin tights, not counting the underwear I had on, and with everything pulled back completely out of sight, and that's wrong and vulgar. I performed to two songs that those children heard on radios every day. Not a single word of profanity, no sexual innuendos, no nothing. But these parents that are extremely narrow-minded and can't seem to broaden their horizons past just their front door think that this is wrong. It was mentioned that the suicide rate is extremely high in our community. It's true. I'm one of the attempts. And here's another fact, they could be your kids too. You don't know. The thing is, is seeing everything they've seen online, from the families that are in this community, from the peers and other faculty members, they're not going to confide. They're not going to speak. They're just going to sit in silence and hide in our so-called closet. It is Pride Month. This is the month for all of us to be happy and be who we are as people. It don't seem like they can, much like the parents that came up here saying that this was a disgrace. The disgrace is the closed-minded and narrowness that their... Let me just pause. That their mind cannot seem to wrap around. I was called a pedophile, a groomer. I got told that I sexually assaulted children. I was even compared to the Texas shooter. The thing is, it's uncalled for, it's wrong, and they really just need to broaden their horizons. And my last little piece is if you take this club away from those kids, they have nothing to look forward to other than the bullying, harassment, and the constant dread of going to school every single day. Thank you.
Jana Youngless? Jana Youngless?
Sorry. Hello, I'm Jana. I was at our GSA's end-of-year celebration. At this party, three people performed their hearts out for our GSA members. This show has since been under fire and completely misrepresented. It has been portrayed as something malicious, even perverted, and something to be ashamed of. People are openly shaming these queens and kings for embracing the freedom of gender nonconformity in self-expression. Performers and staff have been called vile slurs, things which I will not repeat, as well as threatened by strangers and even parents. In place of the security which we find in GSA, we have been expected to feel ashamed and criminal for hosting a harmless party, which I will mention was student-organized. Yes, staff was in attendance, but that does not mean they held the hands of the stellar people who took the time to organize this. These staff simply supported and didn't shame or ridicule us students for planning an event where we could feel safe and validated. So many of us who were there don't see why staff and performers are under fire online and being threatened with disciplinary action, even physical violence. This show was important. Some students were even teary-eyed from the validation they found in the speeches and self-expression at this event. My very own close friend was one of these fantastic performers, and I can say this person has done nothing but fight for their right to exist in our school and community. They have worked their entire life to give their best in anything they do, and when they started drag, it did and still does inspire me to embrace myself. I've watched the years pass as they grow beautifully through thorny fences, and when I saw all of the harsh words online and heard other students shaming them at school, my heart shattered. Why do so many students have to fear going to school because of blind hatred and closed minds we face in our community? It hurts to see and experience. I am pleading with you to listen to those who were there. We were all there by choice. We weren't locked in, and no one was pressured to be there. We felt completely safe, which doesn't happen often at our school. And for us to... We were honored to hear their speeches and watch their performances. Please don't punish students and staff for this. We need to be protected, now especially. We are heartbroken and horrified at how we are being treated. In ending, I'll quote something I wrote in an essay for class about the insensitivity LGBTQIA members face at school. This essay was titled "Be Vigilant, Be Considerate, Be Kind." I begun my paper with this statement. Quote, "Friends, living, breathing, feeling people. Teachers, living, breathing, feeling people. Those within the LGBTQIA community, living, breathing, feeling people. People, living, breathing, feeling, and diverse. This is a simple concept, the fact that everyone is only a person. So what ensues when this simple fact is ignored? Confusion, disrespect, hate? How about all of the above?" End quote. We need Ankeny's protection, and we need security. Please consider us. Thank you.
Ty Klobasa?
Hi, I'm Tyler Klobasa. I'm resident of Ankeny, and I appreciate the ability to speak tonight. My husband and I moved to this community because we believed it would be a great choice for our future family. We're just beginning our adoption journey, and based on what I've witnessed over the past few years, we continue to second-guess our decision to stay here. We thought Ankeny and its schools would be a safe place for us to raise a family and not have me concern my child would be bullied in your halls. I'm appalled by this community and how it treats others. I'm appalled by the inaction of this school board in keeping our children safe when they're telling you they're not. It shouldn't take an audit to tell you, adults, their protectors, that there's a problem and that your schools are not safe. Inclusive environments, I watches you bicker about DEI, or I mean climate and culture. But we live in a world, unfortunately, where we have to think about that because people are not willing to accept that not everyone works and thinks the way they do. I'm appalled. These children feel like they can't be their true selves. I spent many years myself in rural Iowa, hiding who I was, internally battling depression and suicidal thoughts because I thought that I lived in a place that I couldn't accept who I was or in a community that might not accept me. I'm asking the district to do the right thing, be an example for others, keep our children safe, and create an environment so they can express who they are, not be forced into silence because the other voice in the room says that because you are different and you don't fit into society. Things must change. As parents, would you rather your children have a place to grow and express their true selves or continually be told that being different is wrong? Remembering that based on some of the parent actions I have seen over just this past year, this school may be that child's only safe place, and denying them that is problematic. Kids are not born into being bullies or being a bigot full of hate. It's the narrow minds of parents forcing their closed-minded views onto their kids that keeps this issue alive. Keeping children not safe, keeping bullying alive, keeping homophobia alive, keeping racism alive. The list goes on and on. If you don't think that there is a problem in this school district or in this community, then you are a part of the problem. Right now, I don't see it getting better for the kids in your school. But I'm empowered by all the students that stood up in front of you tonight to speak out against these actions and try and make this a safe place for them. Thank you for your time.
Isabel Fagan?
Good evening. My name is Isabel Fagan, also known as Drag King Atlas Midas. On May 23rd, I took the stage for the students in the Ankeny High School GSA to help them celebrate the end of the year. The performance meant a lot to me, and it made me reflect on how I was back when I was in high school. In high school, I was closeted, closeted and afraid to ask the big questions. What pronouns are like? What name? Those questions, among others, lingered as I walked the stage myself. The only thing I was certain about after high school was my sexuality because I came out as pan during freshman year. But something still didn't feel right, and that's when drag became my beacon of hope. I began performing back in January, and I haven't looked back. But as I continued to perform, those questions that I thought I suppressed came back, and they brought more. What pronouns are like? What name? Why it is performing as a drag king feels so freeing? Why is wearing this sparkly suit making me question everything? But I'm glad it did. I'm glad doing makeup and wearing a sparkly outfit made me do a double take on my life and my identity. If it wasn't for drag or for bringing Atlas to life, I would still be the shy, anxious, uncertain little girl I was back in high school. But I'm not her anymore. In fact, I've realized I'm not even a her. My drag has helped me realize that I am gender fluid. This realization is the biggest relief. I feel like I am finally free to be myself. And I want to share this freeing feeling with more people. That's exactly why I got up and performed, to show those kids that it's okay to be you. It's okay to express yourself in your identity. Not only that, I want young people to know that there are people out there like them, that they are not alone, that someone is in their corner always. Because I know loneliness, I know depression, I know heartache. And I don't want another young kid to know those feelings the way I did. To the Ankeny High School GSA and to LGBTQ kids everywhere, I see you, I love you, you are valid. And if you ever feel... Let the golden compass guide you. Happy Pride Month, everybody.
Kelsey Rothman?
Hi, my name is Kelsey, and I'm a teacher and a parent in the district. And I wanted to begin by just thanking the board members for passing the district strategic plan and the DEI framework. I'm on the DEI leadership team, and we are learning about how to get to the root cause of inequity. And I'm really excited about the direction we are going. However, we cannot accomplish this work in a timely and thorough manner without the DEI specialist position. And I'm concerned because it's not on tonight's agenda, and I had expected to see it. DEI is the foundation of our district strategic plan, but we only have one employee, Ken Morris, to lead this work. Imagine if there was only one engineer working on the foundation of a new school. How much would that stall construction? What if there was only one carpenter, one drywall specialist, one electrician, one mason? The construction would take more years than a student spends in our district. And we cannot take years to implement our framework because the needs are too dire. In addition, we have not asked other leaders in our district to carry out their responsibilities single-handedly. Dr. Jen Lundeman is the chief academic director. I can't imagine her trying to lead all of the curriculum reviews and program reviews on her own. To support Jen's work, we have Bev Keun, the director of secondary education, Amy Dipmar, the director of elementary education, and Nancy Lehman, the director of special services. That's four people leading our academic affairs, and this is reasonable because the academic experience of all 12,000 students is central to our mission. It is also reasonable to hire a DEI specialist to assist Ken Morris because DEI impacts academic learning and also social-emotional well-being. To realize the vision that's outlined in our district strategic plan, we need a DEI specialist to assist Ken with his good work. Finally, I am stumped why the DEI specialist position still seems to be in question. We said that DEI means different things to different people, and so we defined it. We waited for the results of the Westwind Audit, and in her presentation to the board, Circe Stumbo said that it is not reasonable for one person to lead DEI in a district this size. Additionally, the data from the audit pointed to a need for DEI work. None of the other specialist positions were debated. In fact, they were unanimously approved with little comment. And by delaying the approval of a DEI specialist, we send a message to underrepresented populations that their needs aren't valued. We should be better than this. And our district strategic plan has the potential to make us better than this. Let's make that plan a reality and hire a DEI specialist to expand on the great work that Ken Morris is already doing.
Catherine Armstrong?
Does my time start now, or when you get?
It started when you started handing out the materials.
Okay. I am Catherine Armstrong, and after substitute teaching in Ankeny schools for six years, I wish to advise you that I will not participate in the CSD sources substitute teachers next year. I want to thank you for giving evidence to us an opportunity to recite the Pledge of Allegiance every morning in every classroom. I appreciate that our students are reminded of the significance of our flag because it represents and symbolizes the freedoms we enjoy in our republic. However, the pledge is almost always recited incorrectly. I want to again clarify, as I did at your genuine forum meeting, that there is no karma that one nation in the original pledge that reads, "One nation under God." As educators, we know that the placement of one punctuation mark can change the meaning of a sentence. Reciting the pledge correctly is one, albeit small, which reminds students that the heritage we enjoy is a country with a constitutional government founded on godly principles. I also want to address an issue that greatly concerns me. Many people say that we cannot teach religion in schools. They feel ridiculous, but we are indeed teaching religion, secular humanism, which raises any reference to the biblical concepts of God, creationism, respect for life, and replaces this with the full importance of evolution and all this regard for life. And I'm going to mention that I heard recently on radio just throwing the... Secularism and Judaism are not the guiding foundation for life. So we're talking about John Solomon. He has a program called "Solom." Two, the death of truth has led to a breakdown of the cultural immune system. Educating them with facts, the truth. This is from Tony Evans of... And thirdly, get kids skewed in regard, you know, they will be confused. They would be cold rather than confident thinking for themselves. And I'm sorry, I'm not the source where I heard this, the program. Sadly, students are not taught how one's worldview influences the whole issue, including one, religion. How and when do I begin? Two, why are we here? What's the point of life? Three, how do we know? Besides, what is right and wrong? But what happens after death? To add in, I will teach a full biblical question in class. If an student or adult desires to hear a biblical perspective of history, including creation and blood, to our session will be at the library on room D on the following dates. There are seven of these days.
Catherine, your three minutes was up a little while ago. We do have the time to hear on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anne Squirehammond?
My name's Anne Squirehammond, and my... In a roundabout way, my name has been brought up in this school quite a few times. I am the owner and promoter for the Central Iowa Youth Pride project, and I am beyond proud of my title holder for what he did. I am beyond proud of the other two children that were here. That's my kid, that's my kid, that's my kid, that's my kid. All of these are my kids. Why? Because there's too many other parents out here that don't want to be parents to them simply because they don't understand who they are. That's fine. They don't have to understand it. They don't have to live it. It's not their truth, it's theirs. They want to tell people that they want to encourage their children to self-explore, but only if it's upon what they want to hear. I've seen your faces as these kids have come up. Most people don't notice the faces when they saw Carson get up and go over and console his friend, his fellow classmate. I saw your faces. I saw your faces. Some I appreciated, some I didn't, but that's not my judgment. You have to live with that at the end of the day. There have been a lot of points that have been pointed out today and I wanted to kind of make sure that we all knew where the truth stood on all of them. One of the things that keeps being said is that these children were over 21 and that there were many different things. None of them were over 21. There's been mentioned that proper and appropriate permissions were not granted. Are these the same proper and appropriate conditions that were met when adults walked in for after prom? Because quite frankly, it's the same thing. And now, over the age of 21, they could have bought in cigarettes and alcohol, my kids can't. It's been brought up, one of the dancers was an exotic dancer. No, she's the one that's going to serve you your hamburger at dinner and tell you thank you for coming. They've been saying that there's adult content that we sexually should be taking against the school and you officials. But I want to ask you, how does a drag queen qualify as somebody who deserves to have the police call against them? They had fifth grade sexual education, correct? That was sexual comments that were being made to them, that was sexual education. That's the same thing that was presented to those kids, was to self-discover themselves, not in a perverted manner, not in an adult manner. And one of those parents that wants to come up here and tell you that those actions need to be taken against you folks is someone who took action against another child because they went in and they were charged with assault and misdemeanor because they broke into their child's ex-boyfriend's house and slashed their bed mattress. I'm sorry, that's a crime. Saying things about these children is a crime. Saying something about you, sir, because of your skin color is a crime. What they did was not a crime. What they are doing here is trying to enlighten people. They are trying to educate. You are educators. We want to encourage education, so let them educate. I will stand with these kids to the end of time. I will continue to provide safe spaces for them. I will continue to be an adult figure for them. I will continue to be like the rest of the community and provide love, which is all they want, which is all you want. And I will tell you this much, 21 and over drag shows are not the same as all ages. And if you'd like to see the difference, Saturday at Pride, these children and others will take the stage at 2:45. And even if those who want to hate them want to be there, that's fine. But just like tonight, they'll be surrounded by love.
Natalie Hasso.
Sorry, hold on. Hi, I hope you're having a wonderful evening. For those who do not know me, that is okay because we're going to get acquainted real soon. I'm currently going to be a senior AHS and I'm here on speaking on behalf of the GSA. A few solid words about me, again, I'm Natalie. As my mom had said before, I am a bisexual. I've lived in Iowa since I was six years old. I have two moms, my favorite color is purple. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I've decided that I would love the opportunity to speak on behalf of my friends, most importantly, my moms. Recently, because of certain people's opinions that gays battered disgrace to society, which is something that I've been said to me since I've been able to walk. And being told that having two moms will only make me less desirable to boys because I was allowed to show my masculine side and feminine side inside my home. I'm speaking on behalf of the GSA and I can personally say that while not being in the group because of other conflicts, the people within are considered to be some of my closest friends that made me realize that being myself is good and I would even say an amazing thing. Because of the recent backlash to the GSA show within the AHS auditorium, my friends have been threatened with silence and even my mother has been, who has been out for years before moving to Ankeny, has begun to feel uncomfortable even wearing a black shirt within her building of work. Saying that the performance at hand was vulgar or even a disgrace to AHS is a little hypocritical when the Spice Boys, as mentioned before, was labeled, in my opinion, which I would label, in my opinion, as more inappropriate and even degrading to females or female identifying within the school. As a student who is not necessarily cool with dress code, but I'm definitely for the empowerment of diversity within the school, the Spice Boys, Ankeny Show Choirs and the AHS dance teams, as well as the cheerleaders, have been able to wear less than what was one of the drag shows at AHS. I do not see any backlash against, once again, the dance team, show choirs, former Spice Boys or cheerleaders. And the only reason I'm saying why is because Ankeny is not cool with sexual identity and orientation, which we all know that within Ankeny, you can only be straight to be accepted and that this just went against that closed-minded, that closed mindset. That show was used to empower those who have constantly felt negativity within AHS like my mothers and myself, who have been labeled in a negative way for being different. The GSA is a way for my friends to finally feel accepted. It's a reminder that my mom, who has, will always have staff that will support her. And I do not believe that the jobs at hand should be at risk, that if there is, then there will once again be a barrier between Ankeny and the push for diversity. Carson Boss has a few other words which I'm going to say on his behalf. I'd like to discuss the one floor teacher, my bad, it was about Miss B. We don't allow her job to be lost, so thank you.
I gotta take a breath. Good evening. I'm going to say hashtag DEI position times four. I've got two other things I just wanted to mention. The Juneteenth Creative Youth Contest is for our students here, sixth grade through 12th grade, are invited to submit their creative projects to be able to answer the following question. What does Juneteenth mean to you? Entries can be included with no limitations of a song, essay, poem, painting, or performing arts, or any other creative medium. Videos entirely need to be limited to at least three minutes. I know the deadline is coming up and I really appreciate the district posting this on the district website. The deadline is June 11th. Submissions for the creative project, Kelsey and I worked on this together, is going to be due June 11th. Can be submitted to ankenycommunynetwork@gmail.com. Please include your name, your school year, your parents and guardians, correct contact information. Awards will be presented to those on Saturday, June 18th at 5:00 p.m. You must be present to participate. Judging will be considered as far as the creativity, inspirational, and informational. Also, I want to do, welcome everyone to the Juneteenth Celebration Festival that will be Saturday, June 18th at the district at Prairie Trail, 1500 Southwest Main Street from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. Featured local performers will be the Isisarrettes, Capital City Steppers, Swan Ballet, Soul Steppers, and the 40-plus Double Dutch Club, and more. We will have a Kids' Corner and a Kids' Zone, a free throw contest, food trucks and music, live music as well. Please feel free to bring your lawn chairs, blankets. Family and friends are welcome to come to the celebration and build the community togetherness. The Juneteenth Celebration is in recognition of the proclamation of Abraham Lincoln utilizing the importance of the freedom of enslaved people. It took two and a half years for them to get to Galveston, Texas, to announce the freedom of slavery. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. I may have a motion to approve and accept these consent agenda items as recommended.
Motion second.
Any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, information only, the information only items were provided in the agenda packet. Are there any questions from the board on any of the items for information only before we move to old business?
It was said at our last meeting that we don't have any living documents that are a part of anything that we do up here. So I would like to say that since we update the student staff handbooks every year, those are in fact living documents. And I just want to ensure that that will stay, that we will update them, that they won't get stale, that we will continue to update them and they won't fall away of our DEI framework in something that's not updated on an annual basis.
The student staff handbook, yes, it will continue to be updated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, old business. May have a motion to approve and accept these contracts as recommended.
Motion second.
Any questions on any of these items? I would like to recuse myself from the vote due to a personal connection on these contracts. But we don't have any questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item B. Public hearing for the amended 2022-23 school calendar. Are there any written or oral comments regarding the public hearing for the amended 2022-23 school calendar? Seeing none? May have a motion to approve and accept the amended 2022-23 school calendar as recommended.
Motion second.
All those in favor?
Sorry, I was going to ask a question on that, on the approval.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. I'm just curious, you know, this is somewhat of a new phenomenon, I guess, just the way the calendar's rolled out and the changes and all that. What is our strategy moving forward in terms of reconciling this long-term? There were some challenges with regards to how we were supporting our retired staff that came up that I wasn't aware of this year. And so the reason, are you asking about the amendment or for? Moving forward, I support the amendment and, you know, with the change in the school start time and the fact, I think, last year was, I don't know, we just haven't been into June where this has, you know, I guess maybe been a problem in the past. So now that we're, so our calendar committee has actually already started planning for the 23-24 school year in addition to looking at calendars for 24-25. I'm going to ask Ms. Graham to come up to just give an overview of what the work has looked like for as far as planning for the next school year and how we're thinking about our calendar with the individuals that have participated in that calendar committee.
In that, perhaps you could share a little bit, because I know we've done surveys a lot in the past and there's always this interest, let's start late and end early, right? And then let's figure out how to cram all those hours in there. If there's a rethinking in how we're going to count or look at our calendar, so just curious.
So our calendar committee has been meeting since the end of March and we're looking at the 23-24 calendar. And then the calendar that's ultimately decided will be mirrored for the 24-25 year. We've had three groups of committee members, a great representation of staff and parents as well as two board members. We have three teams that have created calendars based upon last year's two surveys. So if you remember right, we did our traditional calendar survey and then we did a calendar survey part two to get some additional information. So we have kind of fine-tuned those to make sure that we're meeting hours. And then that calendar committee will get together in September, we'll fine-tune it again, make sure we have everything accounted for. And then the survey that will go out will be the actual calendar so that people can see the visual and be able to give feedback on what things look like on the calendar. And then the committee will look at that feedback and then make a recommendation for the calendar.
Excellent.
Jody, in those conversations, I know that, you know, I've got emails from parents or, you know, comments just about getting out before Memorial Day, coming back, what's the point of coming back for, you know, a day and a half, kind of a thing like that. So can you maybe speak to that and just looking at the hours and what parents might look for in that survey?
Yep, so the calendars that we will present out, we will specifically spell out for people the start date, what the changes are within calendar, whether it's calendar A, B, C, whatever, 1, 2, 3. It'll have the student start date, the student end date, it'll have any of those major changes. One of the things that you'll remember from this calendar for next school year is some additional breaks in the calendar so that there's a little bit better flow for students and staff. So is that what you're talking about, Sarah, in terms of just kind of, just really articulating what the specific changes are for the calendar so that when we're getting feedback from staff as well as parents, they understand what we mean in terms of the calendar?
Karen, I would just say all three of the calendars that are being circulated on the committee right now end before Memorial Day to avoid that which brought us this agenda item.
Thank you, sorry, Ryan.
Oh, no, my apologies. Any other questions?
All right. I do have one more. So this calendar, sorry, you were talking to it when I rubbed you. This one does, next year, we still go back up to Memorial Day, but to Katie's point, for that following year, we are looking at being out. You know, I know I talked to Dr. Pruitt, is there any way to slight the hours and whatnot? But I think we're pretty locked in for next year, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Right. New business. May have a motion to approve and accept the district mentoring specialist position as recommended.
Motion second.
Do we have any questions?
I have one question. This position is being funded through the grant, so is that something that we have to apply for every year? How does that work?
This is being funded through our TLC. We create a plan for our TLC funds and submit that to the state for review.
Okay.
And this is actually not a new position to the district. Is Al Nepo still here? Could you come up and give a history of the position and the need for why we're bringing it back?
Yeah, as you just said, Dr. Pruitt, we have had this position in the past. It then shifted to another person within our district and then at one time when that person left the district, it was absorbed by several people, mostly through our HR office. And then now, as we look at our continuing growth in the mentoring needs that are there, and a big part of mentoring, as I know I heard earlier, is that retention piece. And so not only can we get them here, but then with the mentoring and induction, how do we retain our employees? So that's really the biggest push that Mrs. Graham and I are hoping for in getting this position back in our district so that somebody truly has a focus on our mentoring program, our pre-service program at the beginning of the year for all of our new staff, as well as, if you think about, is actually one of our HR action steps within the strategic plan, was to have a position like this as well, too. Another part of this, too, is the concept of what is ongoing professional learning mentoring look like for all employee groups? I don't know if this position will ever get us to that, but maybe that's the next step in supporting other employee groups as well, too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sarah?
Any other questions?
No, I'm just going to answer your question a little bit more specifically. We would have applied for the funds either in the first year, the second year, or the third year. Once you get TLC, it's written into the student financial, you get so much dollars per year, so we don't have to reapply. If you make any changes to your plan, you have to submit that annually to the D.
And there's a pretty specific framework in which positions come into that space, too, as well. It's not just open, so.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right. Seeing none? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item B. May have a motion to approve and accept appointment of Taylor's Cuny as district special education council as recommended.
Motion.
Second. All right. Any questions?
Yes. It says in the headline description, this is for special education, but in reading the contract, I don't see the word "special education" anymore. The contract talks in great generalities. So is that standard? Is that?
I'm going to bring Mr. Sturridge to answer that question.
The only way, so the answer to your question is yes, is a general sort of engagement letter, our understanding with others, who also serves as our bond counsel and our disclosure counsel, and that we would have a similar letter of engagement with them for those services. The only way that our use of others would be triggered, which would trigger a sort of a connection of privilege to our work with them, would be if Nancy Layman or myself called them to engage them for special education services, which is something that we do now. We just don't have this sort of standing arrangement in place. We've been doing that for years and years. So it would not authorize us, you all wouldn't be paying bills for things beyond the use of special education services. So that's a fairly standard engagement letter.
Okay. Thank you.
You got it.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item C. Policies. May have a motion to approve and accept the policies first of two readings as presented.
Motion. Second.
Any questions about these? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item D. May have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing for approving transfer of eligible categorical carryover balances to flexibility fund in the amount of $105,000 as recommended.
Motion. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item 11. Board member reports. Aaron, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Those of you who have been around me know that graduation day is always my favorite day as a board member. If I had my way, I'd shake every hand and hand out every diploma. I just love, to me, it's the culmination of the work that we do and just the excitement that, and the nervousness and all the clammy hands and everything that's involved with graduation day. It's, 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 it's a, it's just a great day to celebrate the successes. And just thanks to the staff that put that together, because it is quite the logistical, you know, opportunity there. So it was a great day, and congratulations to our 22 graduates.
Yeah, kind of going off of Aaron's convinced that it was working. No. Oh, there we go. Need to have it on. Hussein, it was the best day. It really didn't hit me until afterwards, when I got home and I was scrolling through my Facebook feed, and I saw a bunch of the former students I've had in my class and their parents showing the pictures and seeing their smile and my smile, kind of just really put it into perspective on how cool it was to be, you know, for some of my students to get their first grade teacher to hand them the diploma. And I, too, wish you could shake all those clammy hands and, you know, the kids, when they came up to us, we're just really nervous, and some had smiles, some were straight faced. So yeah, I think it's going to become a favorite, one of my favorite days, too. So today was probably emotional for everybody, hearing, you know, the public talk about what's going on. You know, up here, it's not easy being board members. We have a tough job to make sure that, you know, I always kind of go back to my introduction into a school board, you know, we're at that high level, that $30,000, or 30,000 feet level. We kind of look down, make sure things are, you know, going right in the district. So we hear you, we feel you. I know we may be emotionless up here, but we do hear and listen to what you're saying. And I keep coming back to a lot of people saying, like, the online hate, it's real. The online hate is one of those things that as a society, we've got to figure out how to stop. And so for all you out there, I think what we just need to do as adults and kids is to make sure that we are behaving in the way that we want others to behave, or treating others on social media the way we would like to be treated. And so those kids that are being, you know, picked on for whatever choices they're making, it shouldn't happen. You know, I feel for everybody involved, but I just want to go back to, like, we've got to be better as a society, as a community with our social media. And, you know, it's just, it's, I don't know, I don't even know what to say. It's just one of those things that we've just got to figure something out. So, but yeah, I'm glad all our teachers, Jason, thank you for speaking on behalf of teachers, too. It's not easy, it's getting harder. I keep saying, too, like, I can't imagine being in education right now because it's a tough job. And, you know, I wish, I wish we could have an open checkbook up here to give everybody a raise. I wish it was something we all would agree, teachers need more money. We finally do so much, too. So, but we support you, we want to work with you, we want to hear those frustrations, see what we can do as a district to move forward and to be better. We're, this is the district people want to work in, this is the district people want to raise their kids in. And so, you know, reach out to us, we'd like to talk to you, we'd like to hear you. Dr. Pruitt's been amazing to, you know, he wants to change the culture of our school. And so to do that, we've got to work with each other. So it's not an us and you guys and us against you. The door is open, and we want to make, we want to make this district the best it can be, so.
That's going to be hard to follow, Joy. Well said. I just wanted to give a great big congratulations to the graduates of Ankeny High School and Centennial. I was at policy committee, that seemed about two, three weeks ago now, seems like a long time. Time is flying at rapid speed, and just want to thank everyone for sharing their perspectives tonight, and hope summer's off to a great start.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, before I say anything, I want to clarify, this is our last board meeting, right? For me and Evie?
Yeah.
There's one more?
Yes.
Can't say this whole thing? I saved it. Okay. Save it. Okay. I saw something. I was like convinced it was today. Sorry. Okay.
We heard your disappointment, though.
You know, like that. Okay.
Just kidding.
Okay. Sorry. I just wanted to thank everyone that spoke today and stood up for students. I'm just disappointed that the ideologies of people that are associated with this district are, continue to be put above what's best for students. And I think that we need to continue to support members of the LGBTQ plus community rather than demonize them for their self-expression.
Just a couple of things. I, too, want to thank everybody who spoke tonight, you know, to Joy's point. It's important that we hear from everybody, and this is a great avenue, one of many ways that folks can communicate with the board. And so while it can be challenging, it's, I really value that and that from hearing people's voices. So I encourage people to continue to come and speak to us, especially students. I just am always grateful for students who take time and have courage to speak to the board. I'm very grateful for them and their willingness to do that. I want to congratulate the Ankeny Centennial High School girls soccer team, winning the state championship over the weekend. And to Aaron's point, and others spoke to it, too, just graduation just is really, just a wonderful experience and just really a culmination of everything that we do here in the school district. And so congratulations to the students who graduated over the weekend. And thanks to all those, it is a logistical feat. Yeah. Feat. And kudos to Centennial. That was an hour and a half, and they had a lot of kids, got them in and out. It was a beautiful program, both of them were. So thank you.
Okay. I also attended both Ankeny High School and Centennial High School graduations on Saturday, morning and afternoon. It is such a special day and is so important for us as school board members to witness and share in the excitement of what each student has accomplished during their time in our district. Seeing the pure joy and the sense of accomplishment on the graduates' faces as they walk across the stage is something I will forever be grateful for, that I am able to be a part of, even if it's just for four short years. I got to attend an extra special graduation on Saturday night. While the Centennial girls, while the Centennial graduation was happening, the Centennial girls soccer team was busy winning the state championship and were therefore unable to attend their graduation. So I had the great honor of joining the team for a championship celebration and a small graduation ceremony for the five seniors on the team. It was a wonderful end to an absolutely wonderful day. And when I wrote this, I didn't know if I would be speaking before Aaron or after Aaron, but I have, I agree with Aaron, who has said several times, graduation is one of the best days in a school director's tenure, school board director's tenure. I had a school foundation meeting last Thursday, the committee's in the final stages of the golf outing, which will be on June 29th, if there's any golfers in the room. School visits, 17 school visits in 18, eight days, y'all. It was a whirlwind, but I am so grateful to the administrators, principals, staff, and students that welcomed me into their schools. I'm also grateful to my job, which allowed me to work the flexible schedule so I could visit every school. As I have said previously, great things are taking place in our schools. Contrary to the beliefs of some, there was in fact a lot of learning happening in math, reading, English, science, history, and many other subjects. I saw amazing works of art in the hallways and in the classrooms. I witnessed kids working in a team to create a hole for a mini golf course, complete with obstacles and traps to challenge the golfers. I saw a French class engaging in a game to see who could construct a sentence in French the fastest. I saw special education teachers meeting their students where they are and engaging them in activities that brought out the biggest smiles from those students. I saw a young student who was living as her authentic self and a classroom of students that were supportive. And I saw a visit from a goat, which had all the kids very, very excited. I want to take this opportunity to wish Trent Murphy the best of luck in his future. I want to thank Ryan and now Aaron for stepping into this space. Ryan has shown wonderful leadership in the four short days that he's been in this role. Aaron, we know can handle it because he's been in this role before. I'm currently a member of the Ankeny Kiwanis, and tomorrow night is the All-Star Game at Miracle Field. Coming out and cheer the players from Ankeny and surrounding towns as they compete. I will be there, but you won't see me. I'll let you figure that out.
You can ask him.
We heard a lot tonight about some recent events, a recent event at our school. I want to applaud anyone who got up here to speak, but to our students that spoke, I am so very proud of each and every one of you. Keep standing up and keep standing out because you simply are going to change the world. I understand and support that investigation has to happen, and I support the district taking their time to get it right. We have policies to keep everyone operating under the same set of rules, and those rules need to be applied equally. So what I'm about to say has nothing to do with that show directly. I want our LGBTQ plus students and community to know that I wholeheartedly, unabashedly support you for who you are. I see you, you matter, and you belong at Ankeny Community School District. And I will continue to fight for your right to belong and be safe in our school buildings from my position as long as I am up here. To our teachers, same thing. I wholeheartedly, unabashedly support every one of you. And I know these words seem empty and hollow. I wish I could offer more, but I will also continue to fight for you to be treated with respect and dignity from administration, from families, from students, as long as I am in my position up here at the board table. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the kind words, Amy. Appreciate that. That's a nice thing about going last. Everybody said everything, which is great. And I know we're all ready to go home, I'm sure. As a, as a, as a person who is in the digital marketing world on a daily basis, I see social media for its positives, but unfortunately, now more than ever, we see social media for its negatives. I, I'm, I don't support anybody that wants to demonize or bully anybody, whether it's online or in person. I don't, it doesn't matter who you are, and we should be, we all deserve to be treated with respect. And so I do not support anybody that is coming out against anybody online or being disrespectful. And I hope that as a community, we can be, to be honest, if you have a problem with somebody, go to them. Like, if you have a problem with me, I hope that you call me. Like, don't go on Facebook, that's not going to make us friends, it's not going to make us work together. So we need to work together, and that's not going to happen on social media. And if we have differences, then I hope that we can resolve them face to face, because that's the way that it should be done, and that's the way that we can, we can make it happen. And so that's the only different thing I have to say. I appreciate everybody that came out to graduation, all the work that went into that. As a, you know, this is our first, like, non-COVID graduation, and, and the music, like, the music's the part that sticks out for me because I was a musician in high school. And so, you know, the choir and the band and all that, it adds so much, and you just missed it. So I was just, this was a special graduation to be a part of. It's an honor to be, to be able to be a part of that, and great job to everybody and the musicians. I love the, love the band and the choir. So, any case, superintendent report.
I want to say congratulations to our 2022 graduates at both Ankeny and Centennial. I want to say thank you to the band members and choir members that participated in the graduation over the weekend. The one thing that I want to talk about, and, I'm sorry, and to our Centennial girls soccer team, congratulations. The one thing I want to address in my report is, when I was interviewed a few, last year, I was asked, what am I all about? I told the community that I met with at the hotel, I told the board members that were part of that, that were part of the board at the time, that I was about all students, period. And so if it hasn't been clear this year, with what I'm attempting to do with my staff, the teachers, the school board, and students, that I'm about all kids, then I've got some work to do. There's been some criticism about why I haven't come out and said that I support GSA. Of course I do. The students, period. It doesn't matter who they are and how they identify. Over the past 24 years, in out of three districts that I've worked in, I support all students. Another question I was asked when I was interviewed before I was hired was around leadership. And what do I know about being a leader and leading a district? This is what I do know. Every decision that I make, everyone's not going to agree with that. And I'm okay with that. However, when you're being or staff question whether or not you want to hold people and adults accountable, I have a problem with that. I'm being asked to hold students accountable, but not adults. Regardless of what happens in our district, I will continue to hold students and staff to a high standard, high expectations, and hold everyone accountable. My goal is to make it break, and that's not the goal of our community. That I'm not the right person for this job. Because I'm for every student in the district, no matter what they look like, no matter where they come from, no matter what their abilities are. So I need the students in GSA to understand that because of the rest of that, not just the rest of that. So I need the students in GSA to understand that the reason I didn't come out to say that I support GSA specifically is because I support all students. And I want you to be who you are and I want you to be successful in Ankeny Community School District, period. And I want every student to be able to graduate and pursue their post-secondary goals. That's all I want. And the board has hired me to lead the district. And that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
All right, we do a closed session, so I move that we hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51I of the Open Meetings Law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session.
Motion.
I have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, does require a roll call vote? Director Taming?
Yes.
Director Klaus?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Bonner?